Would you like to do the vote? Vote.
Chairman Shang Fu. Let the record show that Chairman Shang Fu is currently absent from today's meeting. Member Randy Stout.
Here.
Member Laurie Simpson.
Here.
Member Michael Fraz.
Here.
Member Ronald McDonald. Let the record show that Member McDonald is absent from today's meeting. And our stand-in city attorney Zoe Rawls.
Do we have any comments about the planning and zoning board meetings from just October 14? A motion to approve?
I will do approve of the minutes from October 14.
Do you have a second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye, aye, awesome. And do we have any comments from the general public? Anybody would like to speak?
Send my name and address and stuff. Burke, 4529 Harbor Point. I wanted, I think I told you guys a meeting or two ago, but I was out town last meeting, I was going to come with some more informal, like just open for discussion, answer questions, get thoughts and feedback on kind of our original, what we're, we've come up with for the development of the property over by the waterfront. And we have that now, we have something that we have gone through. The financials on, the diligence on, it's something we know we can build and do. And we've already have the, the means to do so and really get this project moving. You guys probably noticed over the next several days, there'll be a lot of activity. We originally, the person we hired to do the silt fencing couldn't do it correctly. So we have folks over there now dredging correctly, putting up the silt fence. And we're going to start clearing and demo on Monday pending this silt fence goes in correctly and we can actually get moving forward. So that'll be, I think, exciting for the community to see the activity happening, but we've been moving, hopefully for all of you understand, like pretty fast for a project of this magnitude. So I have some, some handouts for you all, if that's okay, to give to you.
They would have to, they would have to vote those.
Okay.
If they want to accept them, you'd have to make a motion to accept those.
I'm going to accept this information.
Do we have a second? Do we have any needs to discuss discussion? All in favor?
Awesome.
Opposed?
I'm going to start some here and start some here. I know I'm up against the clock, so I'll sit down real quick, but some highlights. We've gone down a little bit on the density.
And kind of combination, this is what you're seeing, the renderings of is phase one. Idea would be to start phase one, transition into phase two to be really efficient with the contractors and builders so that they can, if they're driving pilings on one, when they finish, they can move to phase two. We've shifted more of the residential to the 19 property with more retail and commercial on the waterfront. Right now, we have about 43,000 square feet of retail storefront proposed and largely most things being elevated above ground level. So more retail on a second level with kind of an amenity deck that you walk open to the public. Also a publicly accessible deck on the waterfront on the top floor that will hopefully be a nice waterfront restaurant up on the top floor of phase two. Phase one, though, is kind of where we're, we've invested most of our, our time and money because of the fact that we want to get moving on that and then quickly move into phase two. So thank you. And if you have any questions, if you'd like.
In the render, is this, is this the five acre parcel that abuts 19?
Yes, the rendering is the 19 thing we're going to get going right away, hopefully generate some excitement. We also want to get more people in there, especially with the demand for housing right now. Get more people in there, really nice places that will be within hopefully budget for most people in a rental capacity. We are, so you know, we are 99% going to go even less density on the waterfront with larger condos along with the retail.
That guy. So rooftop restaurant, you're expecting, so you're looking over waterfront park?
Yep.
Nice.
Ideally, we can work really closely with the city. I think there's a huge opportunity to connect the park into the waterfront retail area and almost creates an amazing loop for people to go for a jog, for a walk, but really kind of tying the park into it.
I just want to know on the record that Chairman Shang Fu is currently present for today's meeting.
And this is, I think, you know, from the beginning, we said, we want your guys' feedback. It's heavily focused on phase one, phase two will get into more detail and renderings, we're investing in those now, but again, less density waterfront, goal is 43,000 square feet of retail shopping restaurants, and then the rooftop restaurant will be on the waterfront.
So in your site, so this is the, are the two parking structures, is that part of phase one?
That's phase two. Parking will be underneath phase one.
Okay.
Surrounding, but mainly underneath the building, so on the first floor. Phase two plan is first and second floor parking, but the back half toward the water is all retail.
Okay.
Running along the water with two-story retail on the end cap. We show a building A and a building B because we can only build building A today.
Gotcha.
Because of the land that we currently have.
Sure. Thanks, very nice.
Yeah, looks good.
We're, right now, budgeted for about a $52.5 million investment in phase one and about a $78 million investment in phase two.
Phase one parking, I'm assuming, is for that building.
Correct, yeah.
Phase two parking will be open to public.
Be designated spaces for residents, again, going less dense there, larger places, less parking need, but then hopefully opening up that where we'll do the first ground level will all be public parking.
Awesome. I apologize if I missed the conversation prior to me walking in. Just kind of walk me through, is the first two or three pages, is that the images that from, I'm assuming phase one on 19? Is that what we're looking at?
Yeah, it's 19, yeah.
Perfect.
Shifting more residency over there so we can create more space for retail on the waterfront.
And your building height here listed, is this, what, six-story or seven-story?
I think it's six.
Okay. Is that the plan?
We'd like, going up higher, I don't think creates any value for the community. We heard the community wanted to keep things lower, we're keeping them lower. We can get to a number from a density perspective that allows us to afford to be able to, to build the building.
I mean, I think you're going to get a better community response for sure going left. That's always been the biggest complaint, right? We don't want to see nine stories on US 19. So that, that's aesthetically, it's very aesthetically pleasing. And I think the larger, I think the larger, while it decreases the number of families who have to populate the restaurants, it draws a crowd that's more likely to populate the restaurants. True story. I think, and I think it fits the aesthetic you're talking, because what are your, roughly, what are you thinking, square footage wise in some of, in the condos themselves, like are you, are they 1,500, 2,000?
Waterfront, we're looking right now at penciling some things. We have some smaller ones right now at 1,200 and the largest at 2,300 square feet.
But I think that fits the rest of the neighborhood, the houses in the neighborhood. 1,200 to 2,300 square feet, most of them. So I think you're still pulling the same family structures, the same, you know, your smallers are going to cater, I think, to your retired folks that coming in without kids. Your larger are going to bring families in with kids. I think it fits the dynamic of the neighborhood, I think.
And I, I think that we're going to have demand in this area. We are, like every market study we've done has shown us, given us the confidence that we can stabilize this very, very quickly post-construction with occupancy.
Well, you're going to be some of the only available property that's compliant.
And also, I think it'll make retailers feel a lot better about coming in, knowing that they're going to be on the second floor. We think those end caps where we do two stories could be a larger store that has their stuff up that needs to be up, stuff that can easily be moved on the ground floor.
Yeah, and then having public parking that will have an event, a storm event, there's nothing there.
There's nothing there.
There's nobody parking there. The people that are, the residents that are there, that even if they're evacuating, they're leaving second vehicles, they're leaving second vehicles on the second floor.
Yeah, I mean.
Third floor.
Having, having lived through it, five feet. Luckily, our ground floor was just our bikes and tools and things like that that are like, weren't inexpensive to replace, but replaceable.
Right.
We want this to be the same so people have peace of mind living there, that they're never going to have to worry about flooding.
Yeah, that sounds great.
Very similar to San Pablo.
Yeah.
Very similar.
Yeah, I think, but I mean, obviously, San Pablo doesn't have public parking. So having all the parking up means that you're, the city doesn't have to worry about evacuating vehicles and things like that that are on that ground floor because there aren't any.
Ground floor should be solely retail and restaurant visitors.
And that should all be empty if we're having an event. Seems, seems, seems good.
Yeah, these renderings here, these are just phase one, there's no renderings for phase two, you just see kind of the layout.
But the site plan makes sense.
Right.
The, the parking for the site plan makes, makes sense in those second buildings and the phase two buildings.
Good, and like, and guys, I would open all of you, and I don't know if you, I don't know all the rules, but all of you can call me as you think about it more, we, we want feedback. You know, based on today's feedback, we will move forward with renderings and investing in the renderings for phase two, so you all can see that, but phase one was more urgency because soon as we finish the demo next week, we'll be working on closing our debt financing for phase one and getting that squared away so we can get to work, start putting pilings in, start building.
Well, it's been a vacant property forever, so I think, excited to see something going in there. That's a logical spot to get everybody fired up.
And we've, we've got a local builder, Tampa. Speaking of local, someone's got a lot of waterfront experience, they've got an office, main office here, another one in Jacksonville, so they're, they've done waterfront, they, they get it, it's important to us. We want to keep it someone here.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at for phase one and phase two? Estimate it. Rough estimate.
I'm an open book, so we appear to, with very much certainty, qualify for HUD financing. That gives us some good terms, allows to put shovels in the ground as soon as possible. We are closing, trying to close a gap of about somewhere between four and a half to $5 million of capital outlay. And then, but HUD is very, very clear on, once you start the formal process and do the interview, nothing can happen on the land. So we have to get it cleared. Soon as we get it cleared, we will be in that process. Looks like government's opening back up. So hopefully that means we can get in for an interview quickly. Our, we've hired a firm to do it, that all of this, this firm has a department, that all they do is HUD. So they know the people, we've got to go to Jacksonville to meet with them and do the interview. We have to get a noise study once we, after the interview, a couple other things. And it's just how quick they move to close. We would love it to be early spring. That's, that's our goal.
To start?
Yeah, and the minute we close that.
And then?
We go the next day.
How long do you think it'll take? I mean, it's going to be a couple of years, no?
No, our plan is occupancy in there, 2027.
It's, it's really, this is really going to change our city. This is awesome.
Glad you heard, thank you.
Mike, any other questions, comments?
Yeah. Excited to see where we're going.
I commend you. This is a step in the right direction, finally, as just Laurie put it, it's finally nice to see something finally happening. For those of us who've been here a long time and have asked for this change for many, many years, and to have a resident that's doing it is the key part, so.
You have no idea how much that means to hear. A long couple of years with not a lot of complimentary things said, so I really appreciate it.
But I think this, this will, this will satisfy many of those concerns. The aesthetics of this and the fact it's not nine stories where we're breaking the ceilings and everything else, we're trying to change the world basically, is going to satisfy and calm a lot of the residents. Because the concerns are valid, because change is difficult for everyone, right? So many of us embrace change, which is why we sit on boards like this. But for many of the citizens, they just see it as the way you're changing them. They, they can't go get their wings, their yada yada wings at Gildocs anymore. You know what I mean, that to them is, is, is life-changing. This is not, this is life-changing. It's changing for our children, for the people who live here and who want to live here. And we can take our golf carts and ride around the corner there. That's big, that's a big thing, and part of the fact that a resident's the one who wants to be part of that, I commend you, and I will put it on the record, I commend you immensely, and I look forward to kind of seeing how we kind of move forward. And the city council, of course, will do their best to make sure you, you get the support you need, but yes, wholeheartedly, well done. Well, and I think the pushback that you got originally was because they couldn't see what you were trying to do. And the initial renders, I think, scared everybody. Well, I think it's, there's an education involved, too. You say the word HUD, people automatically think, you know, subsidized living, that stuff like that, that's the first thing they think. And they're, or low income, and that, how many times we have that conversation, right? So there's always these misconceptions, and 90% of misconceptions are caused by a lack of education. That's all that is. And this is the first step into educating them and getting public buy-in, and that's a big part of that. Okay, any other questions, because any other comments?
No, just, we're excited. I mean, I, I could not be more thrilled, I was there this morning as they're starting to put the, the new silt fence up. You know, confirmed that the crew's ready to start clearing Monday pending building official going out there tomorrow and saying the silt fence is, is done correctly this time.
Good stuff.
I, it's just, for me, I cannot tell you how excited I am to be at this phase. Except from the beginning, like my, my intentions in this were very selfish in that I wanted a place for my wife, my daughter, and I to be able to go and enjoy and feel safe, see nice things. And I'm thrilled that we're getting to a point that we can do that, and I hope that everyone else is equally selfish, wanting a place like we can all say, this is our home, this is our area, take friends and family, it's, it's exciting.
It's a funny use of the word, but I think the reason we all sit here is the selfish desire to make sure that we make a better place for, for our children, those of us who live here, and our, and our residents in our neighborhoods. So, because our neighbors come to us and knock on our door and go, what in the bloody hell is he doing? That has a conversation. I mean, Mr. Hoover understands it more than most, he probably has a revolving door of people coming to his house asking questions. And so, yes, it's, that's a, I think it changes the entire idea.
Yeah, and I think there's, that there's education in all aspects, right? Like I think people have been sitting going, what in the world's taking so long?
Right.
We've been figuring out a way to invest 120-some million dollars into the waterfront area and do so in a way that's pleasing for everybody. And it takes a lot of work, and then also stumbling, like had no idea, we had to get, go for tortoise study, there's no buried septic. And then, I think the last one was an asbestos test, like, we didn't know. So we submitted like three times because each time we just didn't know. Now we know, which is great, and I think we're all kind of going through it together, and everyone's been great.
Do you have a name for the project or for the building or phase one or anything like that?
He's not there yet.
Ideas, we want it to be what the community wants, like I know, that was originally called the water, was it? The Cody River Landing?
Well, Cody River Landing is the place. I don't know what you mean.
I mean, I think we'd be, open it up to feedback. I'm really not married to a name at all, so.
This, that's Cody River Landing.
We have, maybe we'll have like a fun contest around it.
Any place. That might not be a bad idea to, to get buy-in from the citizens to have a.
Contest, let people vote.
Help us name the development.
Yeah.
So I was just going to comment that, I know when you originally talked to everybody, you were saying that, you know, the new Moffett Cancer Center is going to draw a lot of, maybe a lot of doctors who want to live over here on the water. And my daughter lives over in Land O' Lakes, and I'm like, oh, that's going to be too far, but I timed it. It's like 20 minutes to get to the first part of the new stage, so they're definitely going to be coming in.
Yeah, I mean, there's an executive right now building two lots over from me, a Moffett executive. It's coming.
They're coming, oh, it's coming.
I'm glad you didn't give up.
Yeah.
It's exciting.
Thank my wife for that. There were plenty of times. Thank you, guys, and if you have any other questions, yeah, just ask, feel free to stop by and ask me or call me.
Okay, thank you.
Good luck with it.
Mr. Chair, if I could, right, we, you're going to come to council tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Because we have a, we have your sponsorship plaque, so if you're going to come tonight, we'll can present to you then. If you're not coming, we could do it now, but if you'll be back tonight, I'll be back. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, perfect.
We already did, we're down to, I mean, if we had.
Come to the board.
Oh, they're for this, this case.
Perfect. So in that case, any other comments to the board that are not related to the agenda today regarding anything else? No? Okay, moving on and on. Today's agenda, I will turn it to the attorney.
Thank you. Item number two is definitions or updating definitions for special needs and senior housing uses and off-street parking requirements. The proposed ordinance updates the City's Land Development Code to modernize terminology and parking standards for special needs and senior housing uses, specifically adds new definitions for assisted living, independent senior living and congregate care facilities, and additional definitions, and as I mentioned, updates off-street parking requirements.
Ms. Pam, you have a presentation, I'm assuming?
I'm ready, you ready for me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's do it. Good afternoon, my name is Tammy Veronica, Veronica Consulting, and I serve as your on-call city planner. Today, we're, I have a little presentation for you, and then I'll open it up for any questions that you have. So why are we updating this code? We received a request for a variance, I'm going to go back to my notes here, for the best care senior living facility at 5905 on Pine Hill Road. Because of the parking standard, they, they were not able to meet that on their site. So we looked into what the standard was for the city, and it looked to be, in comparison to other communities, quite high. So this kind of led us down this road. When we got into the plan or the code, we realized that there was a need to modernize definitions for those different housing types. Those are in accordance with Florida statute that has been, you know, changed over the years since the land development code was first adopted. We wanted to calibrate those parking standards, so we, we looked at the ITE, now the Institute of Traffic Engineers, Transportation Engineers Manual, and then also standards from other communities to compare what was on the books for the city of Port Ritchie. And then also, we want to make sure that we're supporting housing diversity and resiliency in our community. So the effective portions of the land development code are two. The first one is section 101-11, which are definitions, and the second is section 127.4 for off-street parking. So for the definitions, when we got into looking, there was a definition for community residential home, and there was references to congregate care and group home, but there was nothing for assisted living. And, and of course, some of the references in other parts of the code didn't have a place in definition. So what we ended up doing was to add new definitions for assisted living facility, congregate care facility, because those are legacy in other parts of the code, and then something called independent senior living, which is similar to Abigail Court when that came through. That's kind of a 55-plus but independent living. They, I think Veronica said that they had asked for a variance when they came through, so they also kind of hit a barrier with the city's existing parking standards. Then in the course of this, we looked at community residential home and updated that per kind of modern terminology and also standards. We reference group home only as a legacy because that is in other parts of the code, so we have a bridge between group home and other parts of the code and this section of the land development code. And then also for nursing home, we defined that to include skilled nursing facility, which is, it's no longer nursing home, congregate care facility, it's now nursing home, skilled nursing facility. Then for the off-street parking standards, there was essentially one standard, and it was, let's go to this now. It was essentially one parking space per bed, which is excessive when you look at what the data shows and also what other communities are, are using in their codes. So what we did was we created a standard for assisted living facility. That would be one space, parking space, per two units or one space per three beds. When these entities come forward, they, they have to stipulate in their licensing, licensure, if they're going to be by units or by beds, depending on what their type of car is. There'd be one space per staff on the largest shift, and then one space, usually there's a facility vehicle. For community residential home, which was called group home, back in the time the land development code was adopted, it would be one space per four residents and one space per two staff that are non-resident. Sometimes those are small homes, like six persons to a group home, and so it could be a resident that's actually providing all the support at that particular site. For independent senior living, like an Abigail Court, it would be .6 parking spaces per unit and one per staff on the largest shift. And then continuing, the nursing home, skilled nursing facility, missing my parentheses there, would be one space per four beds, one space per staff on larger shift, and one space per facility vehicle. And then this is something that kind of looks at a hybrid type of facility that might come into the community, called a continuing care retirement community. And so you could have an instance where people start out in assisted living, and then as time goes on, they might graduate to more of like a memory care. In that case, we would look at what the sum of the distribution of those types of uses would be in that particular business. And then also, we could accept a study that shows what type of parking demand would actually be reasonable for that space, and that would be subject to approval by the city manager. So the benefits of, of this type of an amendment is to, of course, clarify definitions, eliminate any redundancies that create, make us go a little crazy when we're trying to define things, simplifying, simplifying the zoning interpretation and site plan review processes. Also, if we're, if we're reducing the amount of unnecessary parking area, we're reducing pervious surfaces so that affects our drainage and also visual impacts within, in the neighborhood. And then also, it supports housing options within the community. And this is just some data that I pulled from the Housing Element, which is pretty much prepared and will be going to the Comprehensive Land Use Plan Committee for review and then to the Planning and Zoning Board after that. So this is just a little bit of data. When we looked at the, the projections that were done by the Bureau of Economic and Business Research at the University of Florida, by 2045, the age 65 and over population in the city would rise from 941 in 2020 per the census to 1,417. So that's a pretty significant increase, so that means that's a sector of your population that you need to be thinking about what their housing needs would be. And then on the bottom, it shows the population with a disability. This data is not directly from the census because that, that site's been down for about a month, so I triangulated with what was at the state and county level. So you could expect that, you know, the total population within your community that has some form of disability is about 19%. So you could expect that, um, you know, the total population within your community that has some form of disability is about nineteen percent. So the public hearing schedule is, of course, today. This is a public hearing. Uh, it would go on to the city council on November twenty-fifth, and then if all goes well there, it would go on to a second reading on December ninth. Staff has reviewed the, the, um, city-initiated land development code amendment and found it to be consistent with Florida statute and the city's comprehensive plan, that it supports housing diversity and accessibility and efficient use of land. It enhances administrative clarity, and it's no adverse impacts to neighborhoods anticipated. So with that, staff has ma- made a motion. There's a slightly longer one in your staff report, so if you could use this if you like. And I'll say thank you, but I'll go back. So if you have that motion in case you'd like to use it. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So right now, we're just discussing tweaking the parking requirements.
The definitions and the land, and the parking, off-street parking requirements.
And this was brought to our attention due to a request for a variance because of the stringent code we have currently?
And the, the, um, the owner's agent is here tonight, so, or today. So if you have any questions, yes, we did receive a variance. We looked at the variance and thought that, well, this looks like it's an opportunity to refine the code and make it more consistent with what actually occurs at those types of businesses. In your staff report, you'll see my research, or some of my research for other communities. So the standards all stack up to what Date City, Sepharilla, Newport Ritchie, I think Tarpon Springs might have been in there, uh, and, and the applicant's agent also provided some of that information right off the bat. So we were able to say, well, this looks like we should look a little deeper and find out if this is appropriate for a, a land development code amendment.
So would the, would the applicant needs only a variance?
This would resolve that issue?
Sure.
You wanna have the applicant?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Hello, and good afternoon. My name's Patricia Ortiz. I'm with Ortiz Planning Solutions. And today, I'm here on behalf of Best Care Senior Living. We proposed a variance, um, for the location we have here in, in the city of Port Ritchie, because generally, you guys are asking for one parking space per bed for these, um, re- you call them retirement homes. And really, over time, we, the idea of a retirement home has changed. You know, there's the fifty-five and up active community, which, um, can be considered a retirement home, because most of the residents are retired and looking for that active, amenity-focused lifestyle. But then there's also the assisted living facility in which the residents, um, require twenty-four-hour supervision and assistance with daily living. So that is the very basic things of getting something to eat, getting a shower, uh, moving around. Memory care has also become very prominent. And these folks who have, um, these maladies that prevent them from being able to bathe, shower, eat, and move on their own are, are not able to pass the, the driver's license test anyway. So requiring one parking space per bed for this type of use, really, um, and I'm kind of going on my opinion here, is not in the best interest for your city, because it takes up viable land for, you know, to be paved and creates heat island for, for parking that's never gonna be, be really used. The other issue that we find with these assisted living facilities is that visitation is generally low. And that is, like, maybe a good reason would be because you outlive all of your friends and family, or potentially a, a less desirable situation where your, your friends and family have moved on and, um, just don't have time to come and visit. But visitation is not, it, it's not zero, but it's not as high as, you know, I think I would like if I were in that situation. So the things that we consider, um, would be the parking for staff for a reasonable amount of visitation and for, um, the facility vehicle. Then, um, as times have changed a little bit more, the patients aren't really being brought to the grocery store or the doctor's office. Instead, through services like Instacart, um, the, and medical, um, facilities have now doctors who see patients, you know, they, they come to you. So to back up, like, the patients who live in an assisted living facility are not going to be ordering their food from Instacart, but if they have additional monies, they may be able to use some type of service like that. Whereas in the past, the focus would be on, you know, we've got to take the people so they can get out. So our society's changed, so it's kind of more brought-to-you type of culture. And so that was the impetus of our variance. We researched, you know, a reasonable number of beds based on, uh, what we see occurring throughout central Florida. And we had actually proposed, um, something a little bit different than what Tammy came up with, but we're very, um, happy with, with what she did. We, we, our proposal had said point two parking spaces per resident, and Tammy came up with point two five. Very similar. Um, the best care facility, which we represent, would either, um, reduce their request for number of beds. You know, they could reduce the number of beds that they're proposing, or, uh, potentially seek a variance if that were the case, as I understand the code today.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Are there any stipulations in general about, like, delivery vehicles or anything like that to a, a facility that you're talking about?
Well, um, what we say is, we say one parking space per facility vehicle. The state does not dictate a required number of facility vehicles. So, um, traditionally, the facility vehicle was, you know, a bus or a group of buses, twelve-passenger vans even, that would take, uh, the residents to and from various activities. But the facility vehicle in current times is one that's used to go and get facilities, uh, to get amenities, bring back or supplies. So, um, that's kind of captured in the proposed amendment, which Tammy has presented.
Asking about, like, delivery trucks.
Yeah, like, you know.
So that would, that would fall under your, um, site planning criteria as far as like how wide your aisles are, and so. I know, I don't know, this is an existing business, so I don't know that they're necessarily gonna do a site plan. I mean, you're not.
No, um, well, this is a, to increase number of beds. So it would, I, I would defer to you all on how that would, uh, affect your site planning techniques. But generally, um, we're, we're, you might have an Amazon delivery. You know, typically, those are being done more and more through the box truck. You're not going to have an eighteen-wheeler coming in and bringing, you know, like, you know, larger items and, and that type of thing, uh, very often.
You have an observation with any issues?
No, not in particular.
Okay, just curious.
Know they have to have stuff delivered there, no matter how big it is. And so I don't think they.
We all do, right? We're always good.
Wouldn't expect a big Amazon vehicle to be waiting for a parking spot or something. I would think there's, has to be someplace they can pull over temporarily.
Yeah, so I think that would be addressed during the site review or planning stage. But there would have to be require, uh, your code would. Typically, it said one parking space per facility vehicle. The facility needs to, each facility has different needs, right? There are different sizes, uh, different number of beds, different populations, and different ways of doing things. So that facility will understand their own delivery needs. And, you know, they'll, they'll come up with places to make that happen, because they, that's a need.
And typically, those types of deliveries would be fairly swift. I mean, it wouldn't be necessarily like a, a beer truck that's like doing a bunch of in and outs. But, you know, those drivers, they get in everywhere, you know, they're, but they wouldn't stay there very long, I would.
I mean, the things that we would anticipate being delivered would be personal care items, um, food, uh, you know, it, it, we're not delivering TVs or beer or, or restaurant supplies or any of that. So, you know, that would just have to be a case-by-case analysis in my mind.
The only question, do we have something currently in stipulation for size of parking spaces?
There are standards in your code.
That's under site, site development. So when was this facility built?
I'm sorry?
When was this facility built?
Oh, gosh, I don't know the name, the answer to that. I'm so sorry. I don't have it in my, my paperwork here. I, it wasn't in the last few years. It's, it's a little bit older. But I think that the compact car parking regulations have come along after the facility was constructed. That's ra- rather new in terms of planning, kind of.
Seems like you get more that way, too.
And this, and we still, she'll have to take her, uh, request to the city, I guess, through the business tax receipts or, or whatever. There'll be a process for that property.
Yes.
Today, we're just looking holistically. If anybody comes forward to the city, if, uh, what sort of standards would be reasonable for that type of use.
So someone coming forward now, even redoing a, a space, then code's going to, building department's going to look at the current standard. If you're real signing parking, I assume that code's gonna wanna look at, okay, well, you're under the old standard, you have whatever it is, seventy-five parking spaces now.
If it's a substantial type of change, they would look at that. Otherwise, there probably would be a level of vesting for.
Gotcha.
If it's just minor.
Yeah, it was more just a question of the difference between, uh, either a very large truck, so, you know, the compact spaces.
Oh, yes, I.
Three of them.
I know, I, I hate that, too, when they, all the spaces are compact, and you're like, I just drive a normal-sized car and I can't.
Well, I know a lot of, a lot of businesses and a lot of residences now are setting aside two or three parking spaces for DoorDash, Uber, for those type of quick in-and-out, less than ten minutes. That way, those spaces are constantly available.
Yeah, and in this type of use, the assisted living facility type use, the people who live there are really unable to, they're really not gonna use those services unless, like, say, you know, you go to visit your mom, and it's her birthday, and you're like, someone run out and get a cake, or, oh, we could have one delivered, go downstairs and wait for it. You, you know what I mean? It's just not a typical.
I was thinking more along the lines of, for your staff, for the staff calling Uber for lunch.
Exactly.
They're DoorDashing lunch in. I mean, my guys are down there currently standing on a dirt pile, and they're still DoorDashing lunch in.
Yeah.
And they're, and, and those guys are parked with their hazards on in the road, trying to find the guy on the job site that that food belongs to.
There's food production on-site, so you could just.
Sure.
Eat the meals that are there.
Yeah, I don't, I, the, this would, that was just more of a question. I think, I think that becomes, like you said, a site-by-site. That's gonna be a, if, based on facility needs, and that might be something that you guys simply do internally at the end of this, go, hey, this has really picked up, and these guys are blocking traffic all the time with their hazards on, looking for who they're delivering to. We're gonna save that one staff parking space as now our transient DoorDash space. So, yeah, I don't think that has a bearing on, on the, on the code.
I will entertain any motions? Or just got, or any further discussion? Sorry?
Discussion.
Okay. I'll entertain any motions.
I will be willing to read the motion.
She's gonna make a motion off what she's reading, exactly.
Recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments to sections one oh one dash eleven and one twenty-seven dash ninety-four of the land development code, finding them consistent with comprehensive plan and ethical Florida statutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Fantastic.
Thanks for your time.
Yes, you're very welcome. Do we have any further business from the board, or any other things you guys would like to discuss? If not, I will entertain any other motions.
I'll move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
A second, yes.
All right, fantastic. Thanks, guys.